Get started. We go much covered. We call the February meeting of the Borough Planning Commission Board. I'd like to start with an announcement. If anyone out there in the audience has a Subaru that's kind of bouish, couldn't tell at night, I'm a little colorblind, the lights are on. I need to get the tag.
I'm sorry.
It's in the parking lot. It's not yours, because yours is redish. What you gotta do?
So, so.
Yeah, I looked inside, didn't see anyone inside. So anyway, if you have a Subaru, back in the parking lot there, you might want to go check your nuts. So we have a busy agenda tonight. We have two land development reviews, one for 119 North Essex and one for 230 Haverford. We're going to take the application period 119 North Essex first because we very hopeful will be a simple and quick discussion and we don't want to hold the applicants up for a long conversation about that period of Haverford. I will give you all kind of a quick preview of how we'll approach 230 Haverford tonight. I assume many of you are here because of that application tonight. Our focus will be solely on issues that arise in relationship to the conditional use application. That's a particular part of zoning code with special requirements for developments that need special sorts of permissions in general. There are several issues related to that, including the main building requirements, issues related to having more than one building on a legal lot, issues related to the design, character, and appearance of the building, and issues related to the number of units in the building. Those are generally the issues we're going to talk about tonight. We won't be talking about other issues related to development. Everyone will have an opportunity to come back in our March meeting where we will talk about other concerns, other issues that folks that I'd like to talk about. What we'll do for that application is the applicant will be asked to provide a brief introduction to the topic, to the project, and then we will take each of those issues one by one. We'll also make sure the applicant wishes to have any other issues that are related to conditional use. We'll ask the applicant to respond to the conditional use requirement for each of those topics. We'll entertain mission or discussion of that topic, and we will entertain public comments solely on that topic at that time. No other topics. We'll have general public comment at the end of the meeting. So that's how, I think that is the synopsis of how the order of the meeting will work. So we'll begin our meeting with an update. I have no, I have one item to update you on, which is that today in email, I received a letter from a Montgomery County Planning Commission with its recommendations related to the zoning ordinance that we discussed in our last meeting and made a recommendation on, which I will circulate to all of you. There's no action required on our part, but I thought we'd want to know if we received the letter. The letter essentially was supportive of the zoning proposal, but that we take the time in the future to more carefully look at the different kinds of building types that are allowed by a district, to make sure it's consistent with what's there and what we would like to see. And that is my sole report, this receipt for that letter. Tim, do you have any other history report?
Today at 5:00 PM, the survey for the Act of Transportation Plan with Lord Marian Norbert closed, so next meeting we'll have the full data available for review. Additionally, there will be an upcoming steering committee meeting. I don't have the date on hand right now, but so if you're on the steering committee, keep or keep an eye on your emails for that meeting.
Okay, and where can people read the results of the Act of Transportation Plan Survey? So a lot of folks in the audience may be interested in that.
So it will be, Lord Marian's, Lord Marian has a website for us. It is lordmarian.org/active.
Okay. Lordmarian.org/active. You can read the results of the Lord Marian Norbert Act of Transportation Survey, which will use as sort of foundation for transportation improvements, infrastructure improvements related to mobility in the township and above. So, thank you. Anything else? Okay. All right then, we will then move on to our, excuse me, approval of the January 11 minutes. We just received those today. I'd like to know if anyone would like to make a motion to approve the minutes that we received.
How do we have one?
Well, we can make a motion and decide whether we'll approve or not. If we can, so you move to, so it's our second to consider the minutes. How about a second? Okay, a discussion of the minutes? You did not have a chance to look them?
I haven't looked at them.
Okay. Does anyone else have a chance or not have a chance to look them?
No.
Do you have any comments or questions?
No.
Would folks prefer to have more time? Okay, so how about then if we make that a motion table minutes to our next meeting? Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of taking the minutes to our next meeting?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. I will though let me know on February 1st, after that meeting, I did transmit to the Borough Council a letter related to that ordinance, the multi-family houses in the 5A District with our recommendations. So that's transmitted to council, and I believe that will be on the agenda at council's February meeting. Okay, so we will move on then to our first land development subdivision application, which is 119 North Essex Avenue. I believe it was in December that this, let me hear this. So this is an application to, 119 North Essex is a building on the corner of Essex. It was during the application is to add to it and to convert some space into a dental office or a multi-family house. The application revealed to us that there were some complications with the zoning code that were not consistent with the nature of what, from a planning point of view, we hoped the 5A District would be. And so that is the reason why there is a zoning amendment now that council is considering that will do a couple of things. It will allow the kind of building which is there, multi-family house, to be in the downtown district if they are contributing resources to the historic district. It will allow a mix of uses in those buildings, and it amends the rules about non-conforming uses to allow those buildings to remain even if they're not conforming from the point of view of their site planning or building design features, if they're too tall or if they're too close or too far from the street, they can remain even though they may not be conforming. And that's really a process of simply legalizing existing buildings because the zoning code creates provisions that unintentionally makes them illegal. So that's what that amendment does, that that council will be considering. So in light of that, tonight, we won't be discussing any zoning issues regarding this application because if council passes that ordinance, the building will then be compliant with the code. However, there were some, there was some discussion, there's a waiver requested for this project, a waiver of our land development code that relates to the width of driveways. The applicant is seeking relief to create a slightly narrower driveway than we require, and that precipitated a conversation with us about parking on the site, access to the site from the street, from Windsor Avenue, and the way that the back of the site where there would be bicycle storage and garbage and parking was all organized. So tonight, what I'd like to do is focus our conversation on those issues and then entertain a recommendation from the commission about whether we would recommend to council that council approve this land development application. So that is what's on the table for us tonight. I think I do have one extra set of drawings. Adam, I brought my drawings, if you want an extra set of drawings up here. But at this time, I'll ask the applicant to come forward and discuss the revisions to the plan that you've made since we saw you last. I don't know if it's possible, if it'd be helpful to call them up on the screen, can we do that?
Did you bring something?
We have them.
I have a paper copy, but I did send it electronic copy.
Yeah, we do have the electronic, give access to.
You do have flash drive, but that's easier.
Yeah. Can you put them on? Thank you. Why don't you get started while we're, if it's possible.
All right, good evening. My name is Chris Young. I'm the civil engineer for the project and the owner of this year, Dr. Coe, and the architect Chip. And so we were here in early December. We had a review letter from the borough engineer. We presented to the planning commission with some questions and recommendations for changes, which we made to the plans in the middle of December. We resubmitted. We now have a new letter from the borough engineer. I believe there's only one comment that requires a plan change, which is a small change to the stormwater. Calculations show certain areas to be uncontrolled, but I believe that's the only plan change required. The other comments in the letter have to do with the requested waivers and then other follow-up items as the plan gets approved, which is the land development agreement, the escrow amount payment of the fee and move of recreational area. And so this is the existing conditions plan that shows here. Currently there's, this is the existing building closer to the intersection here on the right-hand side. On the left-hand side of the plan is an existing detached garage which will be removed. Switching to the proposed plans. And so.
When do you want to go to the fact?
That might be. And so this is the site plan. It also shows a three-dimensional view of the building and the addition to the left. The waiver you were talking about is for the driveway width. The existing driveway is 21 feet wide. The code says that it should be 22 feet minimum. We're asking for a waiver to keep the existing driveway so we don't have to disturb the driveway and the curb and the merge and everything else to make it one more foot wider. We did make a few changes. We added a trash enclosure area in the back. We added bike storage. There's a place for bikes outside as well as the room that was for trash before we changed to be the permanent bike storage location to be inside the building. We did add some wheel stops along these parking spaces in the front here. Parking spaces in the front, we added some wheel stops as we discussed to help protect the building. We did provide some maneuverability diagrams and to show how the vehicles could enter and exit the property. I think, I guess the most significant.
Out of five, it would be more than that, it's that.
Yes. Those are the maneuverability diagrams. So one of the more significant changes that didn't really change the plan, but changed function, was to note those parking spaces in front of the building as to be for staff only. And so that really minimizes the number of times that cars are going to move in and out of the site. We also added a note for those cars to back in, which makes it a little easier that portion of the road is one-way, and so they can control back and in so that it's easier to pull out and be able to see. As we discussed at length last time, because it's a historic building and because of where the addition wants to be as a result of meeting with our, kind of limited on where the parking can be, it doesn't leave a lot of room for back. But the building remains the same as it was before. Really the changes had to do with the signage, the wheel stops, the bike storage, and the notation of the waivers. So I'm happy to go into more detail on anything that's a quick overview.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you for considering those comments and making those changes. Before I ask the planning commission to come out, I'd like to ask for engineer Eric Johnson, do you have any outstanding comments or concerns that you'd like to make us aware of?
As Chris had said, really the only plan, the only change that's going to mean is a very minor change in stormwater report for just documentation, but I have no concerns on that. We did discuss the favor of maintaining 21-foot driveway. That only, that makes sense, not going to have an impact to be more disruptive. The waiver related to the parking spaces is, as you were saying, is a function of the borough's preference, the health of the building, so we find that to be reasonable. The one other item that may, we had a little bit of discussion with that would be a waiver is the code requires by default the eight-foot sidewalk along the Windsor frontage there. It's currently, I believe, four feet. I believe, I think there was conversation last month that you may have been in favor of that being a reduced, or not requiring a full eight-foot sidewalk, but that would be, if it's less than eight feet, that would be a waiver that is required.
Is that a waiver you're requesting? Sorry, I'm sorry, I missed the beginning.
That's fine. That's it.
Okay. Eric, what's your opinion of the overall ingress egress in regard to the safety issues that we discussed there last week?
So I would say the fact it's three parking spaces, they're going to be used to support the staff of the property. It's really kind of the same condition that that property is now. They currently have a driveway with a garage. It's also similar to the property right across the street from there. You know, so with a limited amount of traffic going in and out of there, it's, it's the same, it's similar to several other road driveways already on that road.
So you would stake your whole engineering reputation? Okay, we'll take comments from planning commissioners. We'll go around, we'll start with Dave, we'll go around. I would just like to ask if you feel the modifications to the plan are adequate, adequate response to the concerns you raised, or if you have other questions.
Yeah, I don't have any concerns. I think they've been responsive to the last comments, and I think this is, you know, given the situation, I think the ingress and egress with the cars is as good as we're going to get it. You know, I'm fine with how things are.
Thank you.
I agree with Dave. Last time we talked about this, there was considerable concern about the safety of backing out into Windsor Avenue. I'm not 100% satisfied that it's safe. I would, I consider myself a good cautious driver, but I would have some trepidation about backing out into Windsor Avenue. But as Dave says, I don't think it's going to get any better, and it is not a unique situation on that street. So I don't think we want to hold up the scratch based on that.
Sorry, how do you, I should have called on you first, please go ahead.
No, I agree with Tim and Dave. I think it should be granted a waiver for the driveway and that I'm comfortable with private use.
Okay, thank you.
I agree, I'm okay with everything. I like the fact that parking will be for one-staff employees. As far as backing out of your driveway, then that's any case of Norbert, so like, just take your chance. And then the sidewalk could be in four feet, which is the existing sidewalks, correct?
Is that true?
Just keep it.
Just keep the existing sidewalks.
Just a grand bonjour, yeah. Yeah, I'm okay.
Any comments, Jen or Adam?
I have no additional comments.
I have no additional comments. Okay, just anyone else I didn't ask on the side, any comments about leaving the sidewalk the same? Is Kevin Walsh on the call? I can't tell from the Zoom. Kevin, are you on the Zoom?
Yeah, I'm here.
Good evening, Kevin.
Good evening.
Do you have any further comments about this project or thoughts about the four-foot sidewalk?
Yeah, that's a, there's a discrepancy in the code, so as long as you're willing to grant a waiver, it's zoning compliant from every other perspective.
Okay, and I sense no concern from the borough engineer or anyone in the commission backing in that waiver? How does, does anyone know how four-foot, a four-foot sidewalk relates to the kind of ADA, minimum ADA requirement? Is that, would that be?
So it is, you can have a four-foot sidewalk when you have a zone that can be used for passing at regular intervals. I think it's usually about 200 feet. In this case, how long is your property?
It's not that long. The driveway area can be used.
Right, so maybe you have the corner, and then you have the driveway, and then you have the, or the alley right above it is all the wider sidewalk. So it's not that long the stretch.
So it would be compliant?
It's similar, yes, and it's the same as most of your sidewalks.
It's 125 feet.
Okay, right, so.
Are there any questions from the public about this application? If there are no questions, I'll ask for anyone in the commission to make a motion about this project, about this application. Motion would be just to consider, the consideration would be of the recommendation the council would have, this is a preliminary, any final application, so it would have to come back to us. So one is to recommend the council, make a recommendation about the preliminary in the final application, and then second, waivers related to the sidewalk parking and driveway. Would anyone like to make a motion about those waivers?
I'll take a stab, although they may be very complicated.
Make sure we cross our teeth, we've done our items.
I move, considering the fact that this applicant has brought this project a very long way since the first time we saw it, thank you for that, and have brought it into compliance not only with the hopes and dreams of the planning commission, but also the historical architectural review board on a separate occasion. So I think this is a, I guess this is turning into a speech rather than a motion. So I'll cut it short, and I will recommend that the planning commission recommend approval, both as a preliminary and a final application, and that we recommend granting of the waivers requested.
Okay, I would just add, if I may, subject to meeting all the conditions that the borough engineer has outlined in this letter, whatever's outstanding, there may be technical things really to final plan.
Well, if you put the conditions to comply with the letter, that will cover all required areas.
Okay.
One, he said.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for opening your business, we appreciate it. Okay, so it is 7:25, I'm going faster than I thought. Hope the next one goes faster than I thought. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is 230 Haverford Avenue, application for conditional use, review of matters related to conditional use here. To the members of the public again, I already outlined what I think the course of the meeting should be, but I think it's important also to give us an overview of where we are in this process. As with the last application, this applicant has asked for consolidation of preliminary and final approvals. That is not a matter that's been determined yet, but that could mean that this would be sort of one review process instead of, sometimes we have two or three cycles of review processes. Today, the planning commission will consider topics related to conditional use application. At its March meeting, the planning commission will consider the application in its entirety. The council will hold a conditional use hearing within its generally scheduled public meeting on February 15th, and the earliest council, if these things move according to that schedule, the earliest council could consider acting on the overall application would be at its March meeting. The applicant will also be attending the HARM meeting, Historic Architecture Review Board meeting, on next Monday. The other recommendation the applicant must receive is from the HARM, a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of several of the buildings, replacement of several of the buildings on Haverford Avenue. So what you'll see is the planning commission making recommendations, the HARM making recommendations. Over the next several weeks, those get funneled to council at its conditional use hearing on February 15th, and at its future meeting, potentially in March, will consider the application. So there's still a number of steps and a number of opportunities for public comment on this. So without further ado, I'll ask the team if they would like to start by just sort of giving such overview of the application for conditional use, and then we'll go through those items one by one. And welcome, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us back. My name is Bob Careless of the development team. Very quickly, for those in the audience who aren't familiar with what a conditional use is, a conditional use is not a variance. A conditional use is a contemplated permitted use under the code that requires us to have a hearing before council to demonstrate compliance with certain enumerated standards that are set within the code that we'll go through tonight, so it's very clear as to what we're going to approve next Thursday. As Mr. Bressi alluded to, we have two conditional use requests. The code was amended last year to put three stories of 36 feet as an allowable maximum height, but by conditional use. You guys remember back before 2019, three stories was permitted as a right, it was down zoned to two stories, and it was amended last year to go back to three stories but by conditional use. The standards that we will go through for complying with the three stories are the green building standards that Borough Council enacted last year. We also have a requirement, a request for conditional use for two principal buildings on the line. For those who were here in January or have been with us through the formal presentations of the planning commission last year, we are proposing to demolish the one-story structures along Haverford Avenue, retain the old firehouse building, which is now the get building, and then, so essentially, we are going to go from Mates to stop right before the get building, where we're going to have the plaza that you saw last month, retain the get building, and on the other side of it, have another three-story structure that is much smaller and denser. So the provision of preserving the get building, having the plaza, has us before you under this section where you have a master plan requirement. This isn't, I don't think, a technical master plan in how it's normally conceived, where you have, you might come for an initial approval, come back two years later for a preliminary for another building, but it is true that we will construct these buildings in some phase, which is largely due to Mr. Rubin making sure that he's able to keep his tenants in business as construction is going. So Todd, I will stop there, and if you want to, I'm happy to go through the rebuilding standards first, if that's what you'd like to do, or if you have any comments, just might over here.
Okay, so the first issue we will talk about is the application for conditional use, so there are so-called green building standards, which if you're keeping store at home are Section 5804A4J of the code. That section of the code enumerates different standards that an application must meet in order to obtain the benefits that Mr. Koe has outlined. For us, the question is simply, is the applicant compliant with the conditions that are outlined in that part of the bill? So if you wouldn't mind reviewing your proposal in light of those conditions and telling us how you believe you're addressing them, and then we can have a discussion.
Okay, so again, so what we're talking about here is the proposal of up to three stories pursuant to achieving these green buildings standards. So, but the first requirement, general requirement, is that there's a provision for any building that has six or more units, they have, we have to provide 550 square foot units, which is measured by 10% of the proposal. So in the larger building footprint, we're proposing 21 units right now, and so, pardon, excuse me, 17 units in that, so as a ratio, it'd be 1.7 roundups, implying two, 550 square foot units in that building, which satisfies that section of the code. You then jump down to the green building standards, which are, as Mr. Bressi alluded to, is 5804A4J. The first standard is complying with the most recent version of the IECC, the International The first standard is complying with the most recent version of the IECC, the International Energy Conservation Code. 2021 is the most current version. We have, and you will hear next Thursday, we've hired a, a building performance expert from a grant who will testify that we have, she has reviewed our renderings, and we have identified a pathway for compliance is the ERI, the Energy Ratings Index Compliance Pathway to the 2021 IECC, which essentially is you set, you set out to achieve a score. So if you, as long as your construction achieves a score within the IECC, you're complying with the IECC. So it's largely a construction covenant. These, the, I, we, we can say what score we're going to try to achieve, but you can't really have your final score until the building's actually constructed. But as we'll go through later here, there will be a covenant that we report that Mr. Rubin would agree to, to construct the building in accordance with what he says he's going to do, and that is complying with that 2021 IECC. The next standard that we have to show compliance with is that all utility hookups, installation, storage of natural gas, propane, oil, or other fossil fuels shall be prohibited for all new or substantially improved portions of the building, except that is allowed in the code. That is a will comply. We will, for the residential portions of it, comply with that section of the code, as, as the planning commission addressed last summer, I believe, and council was going to adopt it, is that there's recognized some conditions, some exceptions for some commercial uses. I think the most obvious one is probably restaurant uses. So we didn't want to have, I think council recognized, we didn't have one at an urban box out of restaurants, uses in the borough. So there are certain exceptions for allowing natural gas or other significant hookups for commercial uses. But other than that, we are willing to comply with that position. Electricity, the next standard, electricity, heating, cooling, and similar systems shall be provided from on-site renewable sources if such systems are reasonably viable, considering the characteristics of the site and project. So what we are proposing, as you saw in January, we are proposing a green roof on top of the, the larger building. We think that there is, at Mr. Rubin's expense, a lot of benefits to the, to the green roof to the borough. In addition to the stormwater benefits it provides, we also think it provides benefits to the buildings, such as thermal impacts, like extending the life plan of, lifespan of the roof, general ambient air quality for the surrounding community, you know, just have a pavement, a basketball up there, or something that's just burning heat off. And, 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 and also, as anyone knows, the parking lot that Mr. Rubin's will require in the back, if you start digging in the parking lot to provide a basin down there, I think God knows what you were going to find there. So if, if we were to take the parking lot offline, we couldn't even say how long. If we hit something that's unexpected down there, that parking lot could be offline for years for all, you know, until we figure out a solution. So we think, we think a much better plan to keep, obviously, the retail moving back there while, while construction's going on, the parking lot online, and also not run the risk that we hit something down there that's going to be catastrophic. So we think the stormwater, and Eric, our, our Johnsons, we're both engineers, and work with our engineer on ensuring that we achieve the right stormwater management for the site and the green roof provision. So that is, so we are proposing the green roof in lieu of providing, I guess, photovoltaic or solar panels up on the roof. Next standard is all uses on the property are required to acquire electricity from a third-party provider, 100% renewable energy. That's a will comply, Mr. Rubin put his leases that that requirement has to be met by his tenants. Next requirement is that a voluntary restrictive covenant be filed that basically says we're agreeing to do what we do, and that's recorded as an enforcement mechanism against the property. Mr. Walker, the borough solicitor, and I are already in works for that. The final requirement is that we have to provide electric vehicle charging stations for at least 25% of the required parking spaces of the property. And as we show in our plans, we are providing 13 EV stations in compliance with that section. So we comply with all, all sections of, of the conditional, conditional use requirements for the green building, and you'll hear professional opinions, expert opinions to that effect.
Thank you very much for wanting to answer those. I have a question about the, the roof and parking lot that you, you described. Can you give an example of what you might encounter if you're excavating in the parking lot that, that is, that is a risk or a concern?
Patrick Spelman with Site Engineering Concepts. As an example, sorry about that, it could be an old building foundation, it definitely could be utilities, unknown utilities that would have to be dealt with. I mean, it really, you use your imagination to what, what could be built, or what could be under there that we could possibly hit.
That, that is maybe not technically, but isn't it, in essence, a brownfield site? Wasn't that also like-
Again, I don't know if it's technically, but there is that potential also.
There's definitely a history, because we did a lot of environmental work with DEP in connection with 100 Forest Project, and as part of that, we had to monitor ground wells and discovered that there was a plume that migrated from, that originated in the direction of the parking lot. And given the history of the parking lot, that's not shocking, so.
Because it was an old, like, coal yard, right?
Yeah.
So coal would have leached into the ground. Eric, do you have any comments about the viability of green roof as a stormwater?
I mean, it's possible. Based on the plans that are submitted, we generate comments. I mean, is it, is it possible for them to comply with the stormwater within their building on a green roof? Yes. Is there more information that's needed in going through different calculations? Yes. But, you know, it'd be no different than, you know, the more built-up areas, even if you go down to the city, those new buildings are still required to comply with stormwater, even though they have no ground anywhere. So a combination of the roof or internal of the building, it's feasible.
Do you have any knowledge about that parking lot and the conditions underneath it?
I do not, other than knowing that there is a long history of that property. I did not know anything about what's in the ground there.
First, I will open it up to questions or comments from the planning commissioners, and then if we'll ask, we'll take public comments on this specific topic. Does anyone, does anyone in the planning commission have any questions or comments about the ways in which the applicant will be meeting the conditions of the green building, person of our care?
I have a logistical question, which may be inappropriate in, in terms of schedule, but if, if you want to provide gas hookups for potential restaurant customers, tenants, I should say, will that be done as part of the initial construction, or no?
No. No, that'll just be dependent on the leasing, because at this point in time, we wouldn't know where they were going. We wouldn't even know if, if they were going there. So we would, we would do that after the lease was signed. Now, if we were so fortunate to get the lease signed at, at the point, you know, before the project's complete, we would certainly start the work then, but it would be lease dependent.
You have any comments or questions? I'm particularly interested in whether anyone's concerned that rather than having photovoltaic tanks on the roof, the roof will be a green roof, which is, you know, Green Building Ordinance has written to say that, you know, the preference is to generate power on site. If you can't, you're reading all sources where practical. The applicant is saying that's not practical here. I want to make sure everyone understands what the applicant was saying, and that you have a chance to share any questions or comments about that.
Well, part of the logic of this is, is in order to provide stormwater management, you'd have to dig up the parking lot.
Correct.
And that's inconsistent with the aforementioned desire to not disturb whatever lies beneath. We all know what probably lies beneath up there. It's a matter of historical documentation. There's oil under there, but improved. So if you're not going to retain water in the parking lot, you have to contain it on the roof. Is that the logic?
It's the logic. It's far more expensive, by the way. I mean, the green roof-
I know.
-as compared to panels is exponentially more expensive, but it accomplishes a lot. Some of what you just alluded to, other things, as, as Bob alluded to, there are benefits, environmental benefits to the building, and there, there's lots of reasons.
Now, at the Elm, I will note that when, when they did the stormwater retention at the Elm, it was the very last thing they built, and it was in the, it was under the grant that went from Winter Avenue down to the parking level. It was a pretty big tank that was built under there. Is that, is that an option for, for this site, since you're going to be exposing building footprints down to the basement level? Or is, or do we assume that the, that the soil under the basements is also potentially contaminative? Do you think that's the-
Can I actually say to the, the, all right, we have the situation, the 100 Forest Project actually has a tank in the ground, but it's not infiltration, because that has a DEP history as well. So that's actually just an retention tank.
Well, it was a gas station.
Right. Well, exactly, that's why they're not infiltrated from that site either.
Yeah.
Where does the water go? That has a tank, it's just, if you hold the flush of water during a storm, then you slowly release it.
Into the sewer?
Correct.
My only concern about the green roof, it's my concern about all green roofs, which is the, the future maintenance of the green roof. There's a, there's a whole history now of great intentions being kind of short-circuited by not maintaining them properly. Though I, I, I think that the green roof is the way to go versus the photovoltaics, based on my experience, but I just throw that out. There's a portionary.
Any comments? Do you have any comments? You have no other comments, planning commission? I'll ask, does anyone in the pod like to have any comments about this particular issue related to green building code? Welcome. Just introduce yourself, please, and speak up, because we have this ventilation over our heads, makes it hard to hear.
Sure. Depper Lawn Store, and I, I just had a quick question about the green roof and that comment about maintaining it. Would there be anything that would, you know, require the developer to maintain it?
Ask Eric.
Yeah, I can ask that. Yeah, so is, when there's any development that goes on since about 2012, they have to install it, they have to sign a storm, an agreement that's recorded with the property, and they also have to provide post-money that is to offset the future cost to inspect the facilities on the property. So yes, there is an inspection regiment, regiment, the borough actually does inspect it, and they are recording that they have to maintain it in perpetuity.
Do we have any other green roofs?
That would be the first green roof. But these, these agreements cover all form, all forms of BMP, so the best managed practices, which is stormwater management, takes different forms, infiltration basin, rain gardens, and it's inspected by, will be by my staff. So the Borough Engineer's Office.
Are there any other comments from the public about this particular topic? So anyone here from the AC? Someone I thought was coming from the AC today, who was going to make a comment about that? Is anyone online? I'm sorry.
Hi.
Sorry, I didn't realize.
I'm Beth Casaneca. I didn't know if we were possibly the subject of the green roof by any of the-
We're only talking about the green roof, right? Or any, anything related to the green building. So if it's another topic, we can talk about it later.
Should I not ask a question?
Are you asking a question?
I really wanted to know about the phases, when he said, the question that was in my mind was phased because of tenant, tenant. That's the, I mean, I just-
I'm going to ask in the interest of, I, I want to be respectful of your question, but we really have to focus on the issues related to conditional use first. At the end of the, these topics, we can come back to other questions. So I'm sorry, but I, I want to make sure we manage this. Are there any other questions related to the green building requirements? Okay, so, so is, I guess I'd like to get a sense of planning commissions, are you all generally supportive of what the applicant is proposing?
Yes.
It concerns, okay. All right. Related to the green building, so we'll move on then, we'll move on then to the other green building, the, 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 the condition the planning commission drafted and discussed at its December meeting. Would that be okay to talk about that now? I'm sorry, say it one more time. The condition we drafted and discussed at our December meeting about other green building, so the planning commission has drafted a proposal for further conditions related to green, green building, not so much to, in relationship to energy efficiency, but more towards construction practices. In essence, what our proposed condition asks is that the applicant should incorporate, to the extent possible, given the nature of the construction project, a number of green building practices related to the reuse of materials, foundations, using buildings or materials or products that are locally sourced within a distant, a reasonable distance, 500 miles from, from the project site, limiting the use of apartment-intensive materials, minimizing waste and recycling waste, and meeting stormwater requirements through BMPs such as, such as green roofs. And the idea here is that the applicant can simply consider it, and then tell us which of these the applicant believes is reasonable to incorporate in the project from this menu, if any, and if any are reasonable to commit to incorporating them and about this. It's really a voluntary green building condition. It's not a condition that requires any of those, it just requires consideration, and if any are feasible, that they would be carried through. This is an issue that was one we had hoped to incorporate into the actual code, but was too difficult to do from a, the point of view of writing a code around those issues. So we are proposing to make that a voluntary, a voluntary process, where it makes sense to incorporate these practices. So I'm wondering if you had a chance to consider that and what your thoughts on that are?
I can actually, I mean, we, we absolutely are, are happy to consider this. The only thing that I would ask is, timing-wise, it's not perfectly aligned with where we're at in our process. We don't have construction drawings, we haven't negotiated a contract with a German contractor. We don't have, or at least, I don't want to speak for everyone, but we don't, don't really have experience with some of this stuff, so I can't say definitively whether I can or can't. So all I would say is, is there a possibility that we could table this until we get a little further along and determine what, which of these-
Wendy, why do you think in your process it would be reasonable for you to say these, you know, this is what I can do and this is what I can't do?
Definitely. I feel that we need to be in a construction document space to better address it. We're not ready to specify the materials.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of, a lot of this comes down to when, when you have your German contractor, and they, and they have the subcontractor that's involved in this particular bullet, they're going to come out, they're going to look at the, you know, if they can salvage materials. It's just, we're not, we're not far enough along.
Would it, would it be reasonable to establish a certain threshold, when you have your construction documents, or at some point at which you could report back as to your consideration of these things and what you-
That's certainly not being able to incorporate.
Sure. I think, from my point of view, that would live up to the spirit of it. Any comments or questions from the planning commission about this? This is a topic we discussed in December.
I agree that it's premature now. I agree that it's, that it is linked to real considerations of construction, which are unknown yet, and that certainly the, the general contractor's input into it would be an important part of it. So that tells me that until you have a general contractor on board, you can't really have an intelligent approach to this topic.
I agree. Other comments from the planning commission? And do you have any thoughts about this?
I don't know what authority we have at this point, so.
Is this not reasonable, everyone, that we just ask that the applicant agree to come back at the future point of development with the construction documentation of the projects, that at some point they'd have to report on which of these, if any, are feasible? Well, we appreciate that very much. I think that- Well, we appreciate that very much, and I think that, um, in, in our book, there's a strong desire to see these things happen, but, um, on our end at this table, in the community, not a strong understanding of how it actually gets incorporated into construction practices, and so, um, this is a way of us expressing this desire, and we appreciate very much that you can come back to us later in the process. If the council agrees to this, uh, we will recommend it, that you can come back to us later in this process and say you've considered these things and for this reason or that, these will work and these will come, that will be, um, that will be important to us to understand, and if there is anything that you already noted, that would be, that would be, that would be beneficial to us, so thank you. So we'll move on then to the second conditional topic, uh, conditional use, uh, uh, application, which is for, um, I'm sorry, I made papers here. Multiple buildings on a lot. I'll explain to the public what this is about. Um, our code, our zoning code only allows one building, one primary building, like a main building on a lot. You can have a garage, or an ADU, or a shed as well, but you can only have one primary building on a lot. This proposal, um, technically has, I believe, three different primary buildings on one legal lot, so the, the norm of our code is not to permit that, you would have to subdivide that into separate lots. We do have a provision in our code, however, that does allow for more than one building to be on a lot, uh, through the conditional use process, and what that part of our code does is outlines, um, largely site planning considerations, where the buildings can occur on those lots, if you, and it's mostly meant to guide developments where not all the buildings are on the street. That is not the case here, all the buildings are on the street, but that's why that provision in code is there. It's really to provide flexibility to people who have big lots and give them guidance somehow to put multiple buildings on that lot, so that's why that is there, um, and that's why the applicant has to apply for that conditional use. So, um, could you walk us through that condition and then you are meeting the requirements of that condition?
Sure. So the, the requirements for that condition are, are found in subsection C3 of, uh, 500 401, and essentially what it, what it's striving, in my read, to, to provide is that you're, you're looking at each building on its own in terms of zoning compliance, so, uh, I, our, our design team has looked at it, um, and, you know, where lot layers, building heights and required setbacks shall be calculated independently for each building, uh, they have been, and so in terms of height dimensional setbacks, each building complies with the zoning ordinance. Um, also, there's some building lanes are calculated for each street, um, and we'll demonstrate the project for middle and maximum front build-out standards. Again, we, we've run the calculations on both buildings, um, so essentially, and I'll ask my design team to jump in if I missed anything, but essentially, I think what we're, what the code's trying to strive, what we're trying to achieve is that each building is looked at on its own from a zoning compliance standpoint, um, and these do, um, and as Mr. Ressi alluded to, we do not have any building setback into the property here, both buildings that are subject to the conditional use are closed to have front, well, at front of it. So, have any answer, any questions?
Does anyone in the, the planning commission have any questions about compliance or the...
So which are the three buildings?
The three buildings?
You said there are three buildings on this lot?
No, so there's, there's no, there's, there's no building setback into...
No, 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 there's multiple buildings, how many buildings do you...
We're proposing two buildings on consolidated.
Okay.
Or three, if I'm not mistaken.
Separated by the plaza.
Yes, we're going to have the, from MAFS down to, we're easy bone repairs now, we're taking easy bone repair out, providing plaza, it gets to be retained, and then a, a smaller building to next to get on the other side.
So, um, all the buildings have to be a building to allow both zoning district, I think they meet that requirement after the front facade of the primary frontage, and then the other, the other conditions that we talked about, so, um, Kevin, are you on the compliance film?
No, I'm still here.
Do you see any concerns about compliance with this, um, this set of conditions, this set of provisions?
Not at all. No, we actually worked out the last concern of mine, which had to do with the courtyard today.
Okay. Um, so you, you feel that the proposal allows compliant with all the conditions that are in that section of the code?
For conditional use, yes.
Okay. So that means not compliant with some conditions of the code, or something?
I mean, they're still working on the design for some of the facade features, like windows and sill heights and things like that, but, uh, we haven't gotten to that.
Okay. Just sort of a precipitous type of comment, okay. Okay, is anyone, so would I, is it safe to assume that the planning commission is satisfied with the compliance with this provision? Okay, so I'm going to, um, swap the order and just keep things moving a little bit. The last set of conditions relate to the standard conditional use requirement, so we just discussed green building, which is a particular part of our code, we just discussed multiple buildings on a lot, which is another part of our code, I think the planning commission senses supportive of the way you've met those conditions. Um, we also in our code have just general conditions that any conditional use suffocation must meet, um, and those are in section 500, B084-A4. Two of those are related to architecture and urban design, um, and one is, is arguably related to the mix of, um, the, the mix of units in, in terms of their size. Um, I'd like to switch the order and not talk about architecture or urban design first, but talk about the unit mix, because I think that's a pretty short topic, then we can talk about architecture and urban design. So in terms of the unit mix, um, um, the, um, relevant reference is that the conditional use must be in accord with the borough's comprehensive plan and any of its implementing plans or policies, and the comprehensive plan directly speaks to the need for increased density in downtown Norbert, the need for the provision of arranged housing options and sizes, uh, for ensuring a supply of smaller unit sizes to serve residents of different needs, uh, and to allow existing residents to downsize. Uh, so in general, the comprehensive plan and course is diverse, the mix of, of units as, as we can achieve. So, um, what I would like to ask is, I believe when you came and presented in, um, March of last year, the overall development, including Little Gym and the other building at the corner, which is not part of this because it was 33 units, but I think the sum is a little lower now, is that correct? Correct. So overall, how many is it, the, altogether, all of those?
Um, right now, we're, I guess, with the, with, with the, the unit over revivals, we'd be at 30. So 29, um, would be the new, the new land development application that we have in, plus the eight in Little Gym, and our plan is to convert the second floor of the revival building out on the corner where Swan Dancer is going to move, convert the second floor to an apartment, so that would total 30.
Okay. So I recall at the, um, part meeting, there was a comment made that many of the units in the large new building are, are, are rather large, and I guess the question we'd like to pose is, would you be open to considering having more units on the site, uh, and add more of a variety of sizes of units, uh, which I think would address the condition, the comprehensive plan that, that they supposedly don't know? Is that something you'd be open to considering?
Yeah, as you, as you, um, referenced, we've had prior iterations of the drawings where we've had more units. Our preference would be to have more units.
You have a number in mind that you prefer to stay in, or...
Well, we have limitations, parking ratios, things like that, but, um, my sense is maybe get back to kind of where we started in that, add maybe four units to the mix right now, I think would, would work out really well, because to be candid, what we, what we have currently skews large. Now, we're, we're fortunate in Norbert, there, there, if you look at the demand, there's unusual, uh, atypical demand for these larger units, but the preference would be to do more units and have them be smaller.
Okay, I'd like to ask if the planning commission, there's have any, I sort of brought this up from past conversations and meetings that we've had, I'm curious if planning commissioners have any thoughts or comments on this topic about the number of mixed units? Start here and go around.
The only thought I had was, um, add units, you add parking need and you alluded to that, um, and, I mean, I know that there, I guess, I guess I just wondered in a general question, is there any way to, um, encourage, entice, I mean, reward or something, um, fewer cars for people living in the units? I don't, I don't know how the Elm is faring with their parking lot, but my understanding is that there aren't as many cars as they thought that are for the residents who live there. So, I mean, I, I guess what my question really is, what's going to happen on the ground floor, and we think that the day use of the parking lot will be for retail use, but the truth of the matter is if there's a, a restaurant use in this building, that's going to be a nighttime use too, so there will be a competition for parking spaces, and is there any way to regulate that or to, you know, bigger units, obviously, one would think would be fewer cars?
Well, so a couple, a couple of comments, I've said before in public that, um, the strategy here is to, um, take advantage of the fact that this is truly, like, by definition, transportation oriented design, it's at the train station, um, and, uh, the idea would be to screen a lot of the prospective tenants and sort of let them know, um, that the arrangement is, is not going to be like it might be in other places where you're, like, for instance, I've done something in Nor, in Radnor where we're required to have two parking spots for every two-bedroom unit, um, and one for one-bedroom unit, and that's an absolute requirement, and this is just a different type of project with a set of train station, and I've also said in the past, which is true, is that I bear the, the biggest risk here, because if it doesn't work, people aren't going to want to rent, or they certainly aren't going to pay the rent that we need to achieve, so I feel pretty confident in the way we're going to lease this.
I do have another question though, too, because I think one of the reasons we like the smaller units is because they're more affordable, but is there any, any kind of a further, um, affordable unit requirement that the borough could have as part of the conditional use?
Just, I'll point out, if, if we were, like, would I be right that the four units would go in the larger building? We don't have...
The four units go on the larger building.
So one of those four units would be, because that would put us over the ratio, so if we had 21 units, 2.1, your code requires, no matter what your ratio is, requires a rounding off.
Yeah, we'd have another 550 square foot.
Being required to provide that's part of the initial use, if that was the direction.
But the, just the general thing that you should, um, be clear on is that if we were to add units here, we're not growing footprint of the building, so every additional unit that we, that we put in there reduces, takes, takes the load off the other units, and like I said, um, under ordinary circumstances, if this were located anywhere else, I'd have a lot of sleepless nights about the size of those units, based on the rent that we have to achieve for those units. Norbert's a little unusual, the feedback that I've gotten from, uh, the Elm and up in Wingwood at the train station, um, at Maybrook, is just that there's a huge demand for these larger units, and it's not a big project, so if, if we were going to introduce 100 or 150 units, I'd be extremely concerned, but this, it, it's a high-profile project because of where it's located, but the actual scale of this, the number of units is not big, it's, as compared to, say, the Elm, it's fractionally sized than the Elm. You know, where this currently is 17 units, the Elm, I think, is 55 or 56, so.
But my question still has to do with affordability, because I still feel like these are going to be, you know, on the higher end scale of affordability, and is there any way for the borough to, um, influence some portion of actually affordable units?
Oh, the only issue that...
I mean, if you're kind of, if you're going to pay a high price for like 75, or 80% of the units, could 20% or 10% be affordable, really in a scale of affordability?
The reality of this project is, because of, um, the complexities and the land basis and the green, you know, all the things that we have to conform to, to get this approved, it's enormously expensive as compared to other projects, when you break it down on a per square foot or per unit or whatever, and the only way that we, that it remains feasible is we have to maintain these, these, the rents, and keep in mind, um, I've been asked, and I'm, and I'm perfectly happy to do, um, which I've stated in public before, um, work with my existing tenants and, and likely end up with rents that are below market, and there's just only, only so much that we can take on.
Yeah, I mean, again, I understand your position, I'm just saying that there, you know, it's like you, you have a high end, you have a, a low end, and they balance out so that you make what you need to ultimately, that's really the question. And I, and I agree, I think at the retail space too, I'm worried about the cost of the retail space, and how it's going to affect not only the current tenants, but any new tenants that might want to move in may be prohibited from that opportunity.
I got it, you have a comment?
Well, I just think it's a strategic issue, if the goal was affordability, then the one thing that the borough has the most control over is to try to enable the process to be efficient and to be able to achieve a reasonable perform on for development. I think it's a good point, so, I mean, you know, the, the size of the units does ultimately presumably help with the rent, the bigger they are, the, the more the rent has to be to support the unit. They're still going to clear it at market price, whatever size they are, they're, it's related to supply and demand, but I think it's worth undermining again that the regulatory, regulatory compliance comes from the borough, so the more cost is added to the project, the more it's got to be recruited through the rents, and the more parking space we supply, the more cost will be to develop and so on.
All right, we'll continue here around Dave or Jim, do you have any comments about this number of house units? Possibly a pack of small units or more units?
I guess I would always, I, I've never been concerned, uh, with, with this project, uh, about density and increasing the number of units, like you said, it's, it's a relatively small project, uh, I think greater density is good in terms of having more people, you know, on the street, you know, using the businesses and all the rest of it, um, so I would encourage, uh, you know, the, the limiting factor, of course, is always the parking, and as long as you can meet the parking requirements, you know, I'm all for it.
I agree. My, my, um, informants or a bunch of old people like myself living in Norbert in houses that have become too large for them, um, favor small units that they can downsize into and still be in Norbert and still be across the street from the Greeks, which is unusual and important to them. That's sort of surprising, actually.
That accounts for the high rent.
Certainly does apply to me, but, um, so I'm, I'm comfortable with small units, I just want to make sure that Tim's project carries itself and doesn't fumble because it's not got enough rent. That would not be good for any of us. But let the small units roll.
No, I agree with everyone here, I'm generally in support of a little bit more density in downtown Norbert to support the retail, we're talking about four or five additional units, it's not even really increasing the square footage, right? It's just making the unit mix a little bit more diverse, the one bedrooms, you get the rack break down, uh, general support about it, and then as far as affordability, I'm in, I think it's great in practice if we could try to hit there, but a lot of that comes with tax subsidies, so, um, you have to offset that, which I believe we're prepared to want to do, boroughs, so, overall, in support.
Okay, any comments?
I have nothing to add, I'm also in support of the higher density.
Any, any other comments?
No, I think that whether it's 30 or 34 units is not a material change to the parking demand either, too, I guess it could be if everyone had two cars, but, um, I think that the, that also the developer should have some discretion to try to meet the market.
Okay, so it sounds like the sense of the commission is providing, um, encouragement to recap the unit mix, uh, something we'd like to do, I don't know if that's necessarily a condition per, per se, it just may be, but when you come back with revised plans, consider whether a different unit mix works better. Um, I should ask, is there anyone in the public who has some... I should ask, is there anyone in the public who has comments on this topic about same square footage, but instead of having a number of large units, having more smaller units within the building? Does anyone else have any comments about that? Deborah, sorry, I'll call on you next, okay?
I don't have any problem with having more units. I just wondered, how is the parking being handled for this project? Is it, is it street parking or?
As a matter of information, maybe you could discuss that is what it is to refresh everyone's memory on how the parking works.
Sure, there's going to be 23 meter heads in that back parking lot. So those spots will be available for patrons of the shops. That was the, the arrangement that we made with Borough Council.
So they're going to park in the lot that's already there?
Yeah, yeah, well, I don't know if you've been in any of the past meetings, but the way the lot works is we will be acquiring a lot this spring, so.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you were aware of that.
Yeah, I guess, you know, if they're going to park back there, it's going to take a lot of parking away from like the shoppers, you know, and parking is such a big conversation in Narwhal.
Keep in mind one thing that I've mentioned in past meetings. We are decommissioning, meaning like removing probably about 12,000 feet of current commercial shop space. Because the Little Gym building is 8,000 feet and that'll be converted to eight units. If that were to stay as 8,000 feet of commercial, or if the Little Gym were to come back and reopen, it would, it would use quite a bit more parking than the eight block units would use. And also, we're creating a plaza where Easy Phone is. So that's a shop that would otherwise, you know.
Oh, you're going to, that's going to be a plaza.
It's going to be an open air plaza, yes. So that's just an important consideration.
Yeah, I was wondering if that parking lot, did you ever consider making it like two tiers? Or is that like another thing?
We did at one point, a long, long time ago, but it's so complicated. Everybody just thought, I, I can't speak for everyone, but most people thought it was better just to let it function the way it's functioned for 100 years or however long, not ingress, egress. Nothing changes back there as far as that layout, same, same layout.
So we'll have more time to talk about the overall impact of this on downtown parking at our next meeting, but I thought that would be useful, at least to have that information out there tonight. Any other comments, sir, I'm sorry, you wanted to speak?
I'm Mr. Rubin on Dudley Avenue. I think it'd be great if we could have affordable housing in Narwhal. I don't know if it makes sense to try to squeeze in more apartments. I understand Mr. Rubin's point, you know, I appreciate the effort they've made with the plaza and everything else. But I don't see how parking gets any better. I mean, we're going to have in the last two years, three years, four years, whatever, 55 units in the Elm, 30 units here, units over the old property, the garage, units over the bricklands. You know, ideally we have affordable housing, but I think it's pie in the sky. And I don't see any surveys, but you know, that people just want to move here and not have a car. Or if they have two people, two cars. I mean, in my block on Dudley, you know, there's across the main, there's three twins, four twins. Everybody's got two cars and, and it used to be one car. And that's the way Narwhal was, and I get it. I mean, it's fine. I have, you know, I'm not knocking anybody that has a car. I just think it's a real issue that if we want to encourage more units here, I think it's going to be a further problem with the parking. And I understand Mr. Rubin indicating that they're going to have meters. So I don't know what that means, is that a meter you can put money in for eight hours and somebody goes to work in the city and leaves their car there? Or they have somebody move their car? I mean, one of the beauties of Narwhal, if you're going to work in the city, is you can take the train in. If you take the train in, I still think you're going to have a car and it's going to have to be somewhere, whether it's off site or you can put money in the meter for eight hours. So I, I like, really, I like most everything that I'm hearing here, but I'm, and I understand the desire to have affordable housing in this town. So I'm not sure, I know the solution, but I wonder if trying to say, let's have more units in this building would make sense. To me, I'm not sure that it does.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, hold on the comments about parking. That's not the topic tonight. I know it's related to the number of units. All we're asking tonight is if the applicant will consider more units in his application. If the applicant, applicant comes back in March with an application with more units, we can have a more robust conversation about the impacts of parking at that time. I think right now, playing the sentence is it's okay to ask him to consider what unit mix is the best for his development. And I will hold my thoughts, personal thoughts on the parking at this point. I think that's a more appropriate representation for March. So are there any comments on this specific topic from anyone else here or online in the public? Anyone mind? I see.
Excuse me for a second, but to the extent that you tell me my comments were not on topic, I think they're directly on topic because they, they apply-
I said they're related to the number of units. However, they're not on topic because the applicant has not yet proposed more units. So what will happen is if the, if the applicant comes back next month and proposes more units, then we can have a conversation about parking. I don't want to have an evening's conversation about theoretical idea. So we've encouraged the applicant to come back. If the applicant comes back and proposes more units, then that's the time to discuss parking.
Yes, but it's good that he hears us about that.
I would really like to move on from the topic of parking.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm in.
I'm sorry, we're on party, I'm not, it's going to be very quick. I just seem to say through the borough's point, if this logic works, great. If it doesn't work, what is the plan? Like, you know, like are more built?
I'm not going to accept questions or conversations about parking now. We're not going to talk about parking, I'm sorry. We can talk about that in March.
Talk about planning. Talk about planning.
I don't understand your question. What if this doesn't work? What do you mean?
I can't hear you, what did you say?
I don't understand your question.
If it doesn't work, if, if, if all these people move in and there's like nowhere left to park?
I'm not going to entertain a conversation about parking now. I don't think I can be more clear. We will talk about that next month. We've asked the applicant to consider what the right balance of units are for the economic sustainability of this project. If he comes back and proposes more units, then we can talk about parking impacts.
So all in peace, the economic sustainability of if you can-
Excuse me, I'm not going to say this again. We will talk about this in March if the applicant comes back and proposes a different mix of units. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, so we'll move on then to the last topic, unconditional use topics, which is the conditional use, these are related to architecture and urban design. Conditional use complies with all other applicable criteria and standards of the Narwhal's growth code, together with any other applicable state or federal regulations governing the same. So this is related to our subdivision and land development ordinance, which prescribes certain requirements that must be met if a building is more than 45 feet wide. So that's one topic. And then the other is, the conditional use is harmonious and appropriate in design, character, and appearance with the existing or intended character and quality of the development in the immediate vicinity of the subject property and with the physical characteristics of the subject property. So that essentially means that the new development must be keeping with character with its surroundings. And so those are two conditions that must be met. So before we talk about that, I'd like, a, a, a condition normally has to have some kind of objective measure that must be met in order for us all to understand that it's been met. In the, in the first case, for a building that's more than 45 foot wide, it has to meet certain provisions that are laid out in the subdivision and land development ordinance to make Alaska to meet those, those requirements of code. Second case, conditional use is harmonious and appropriate in design, character, and appearance is, is more subjective in terms of how it's written. And what I'd like to propose to the commission, if you would consider this, is that while we may review and comment on the designs tonight, that the, the objective condition that might be met is that the, that the HARB, the Story Architecture Review Board, make a recommendation for certificate appropriateness. And HARB uses certain standards and guidelines for the secondary interior that it uses to evaluate the design. And that we essentially say, we would, we would agree that this condition is met if the HARB issues a certificate appropriateness for this project. And that our role tonight simply needs to provide feedback to the HARB on our thoughts about the design and what do I consider. I guess the first thing we'd like to do is ask procedurally, do you, do you on the commission feel that that would be a fair way of determining that this condition is going to happen?
When does the COA application get submitted?
So the, there's, there's a little confusion about that. The applicant has paperwork that says the application for the certificate appropriateness was submitted in October, which I received a copy of today. So I assume that that was true, that it was submitted in October. I'm not sure.
You need Kevin, I see Kevin.
Kevin, do you have the phone on this?
Yeah, it was definitely submitted. I think I have, the office officially has its date in early October, but it's definitely been submitted. I'm sorry, early November.
So in any case, the HARB then could formally put this on its agenda at the appropriate time. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've actually already talked about it, like in a preliminary manner. The interesting thing about this section is that generally a COA doesn't, has to be approved before any other permits are approved. What's interesting about what we're discussing, again, getting a little off topic, is land development approval isn't a permit. So technically, the land development approval can come first before the HARB or vice versa. So they can kind of run at their own pace based on land development not being a formal permit.
So would it be the demolition permit that requires this? That's a question for Kevin. Wait, Kevin, what all, in this case, I suppose would be a demolition permit, is that correct?
Right, so any type of permit for their sake would include the demolition, whether it's the new construction or the demolition. And they, those, those permits haven't been submitted, but the idea is that you're supposed to come forward with a HARB application before any other permits. That's kind of the idea of the HARB, which is what they did.
So Kevin, how would that work procedurally? If we were to say, in order to meet this condition, the applicant would agree to obtain a CFA from the HARB, would that work procedurally from your point of view?
Yeah, again, and the only reason that does work is because land development and conditional use aren't technically permits, they're more like processes.
Right. Is that agreeable, Patrick?
So just to make sure I'm clear, you're, you're suggesting a condition of approval be that we have to attain a COA, a recommendation for approval of COA from the HARB in connection with the approval of the conditional use application?
Correct.
We have to do that anyway, so again, we're, yeah. I just want to make sure that the condition is not fashioned that we have to obtain the recommendation before Thursday because, because the HARB might-
I will, I will let you consider it work that out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine to work out, we can, John and I can work out, I can, something that beats the spirit of that suggestion between now and next Thursday. I'm, I'm fine to work with John.
Because what we're struggling for here is an objective, right? That we can offer. And we don't want to give you a set of conditions that are different from what the HARB can-
Understood.
Yes, so, okay. So that under, that understood then, what I'd like to do is ask the applicant to show us what they are working with right now in terms of the architectural design. And then our discussion will be focused on feedback that we would give to the applicant and to the HARB for its consideration when it meets-
Next week?
Or in the future.
Sure, so I'm going to ask Nancy Bashing from CBP Architects to do that. One thing I just kind of want to set the table with is, Mr. Bressey alluded to that there's in the, in the union goal. And then the general conditional use approvals, one of the, so it's clear, one of the provisions that we have to show compliance with is that we also comply with all related subdivisional land development standards. Here, the most high profile one is, is the facade features that, that live in the SADO. So while we are going to show you drawings that we, I hope you will find took into account everything that you told us in January, and the HARB told us in January in response to Eric and Kevin's review letters, I, I just, I'd ask that we just stay focused on the SADO provision, you know, unless there's more time later to talk about other issues that aren't relevant to the conditional use. Because as Mr. Bressey's alluded to, we will be back for sort of all the other land development features, landscaping, lighting, things like that will come in March. But obviously we can't not show you, the, the plan that I intend to mark is in exhibit next week to show compliance with the section without getting into the drawing. So that's just helpful to set the table here, so Nancy, I'll turn it over.
I'm not sure if you want to do those.
No, so I, I think what we want to show is the elevations that show that we comply with in the SADO section 450, 32B first, if you could.
So if you could just stand those plants and just go to the couple sheets down, there's elevations right there. So can you zoom in on, this is what you're talking about?
Yes.
So, so we've done, you know, obviously we've been working back and forth with you for several months now on the elevations and the overall design of the building. But what we just want to focus on right at this moment is the requirement along the first floor and what that experience is as, as someone is walking along the street. So there's kind of two separate things that we're having to comply with. One is in the zoning code, which requires that from, from two foot six up to eight foot feet up, there's, there's a certain ratio of, of solid wall to window opening. And the window openings can be up to 75% and the walls can be up to 25%. And so you see here how we have complied with that. It calls it out over here, but they are just at 74%, 26% or something. But that, that is laid out very clearly in the zoning code. It also laid out very clearly that these sections that break up areas of glass have to be a maximum of 24 feet, 24 inches wide. So you see those 24 inch brick piers called out. There's a SADO requirement then that talks about when your building is longer than 45 feet, you have to have, within that, and I'm not going to say this exactly right, but within that horizontal plane, there has to be a door within 45 feet. So that's what this red overlay here is, is for every 45 feet. We are slightly out of, and we are like two inches away from that door within that first 45 feet. Every other 45 feet, you see, and we have a 17 foot at the end, we have a door within that 45 feet. When we went to add another door in this section, in addition to the one we have right near the 45 feet, we then were over the zoning code requirement for the maximum of 75 feet of open. Does that make sense?
So let me, if I can say that a little different, sure. So in, in order to achieve what the zoning code wants here, in terms of the ratio of openings to wall area, which is 500, 502H, what we're asking for is the waiver to put the doors in every 45 foot horizontal section as the SADO would require it. We're not saying, don't let us put the door, but we're just, in that, I think as Nancy is explaining, we just can't comply with both the SADO and the zoning requirement for the, as it relates to the door. So it, it's a technical waiver, but it's only a waiver from how you would want the door placed in every, every, you know, every so progression. Is that accurate? Yeah.
But we're absolutely meeting the zoning code requirement.
I subscribe to the conversation.
I subscribe.
Show them the other elevations, I guess, as that, like scroll up from this diagram, maybe just to see kind of what that would look like in color.
Yeah, so here, here is that same elevation, red. And if you, if you wanted to go back to the plan, you could see how it, I think we have really come a long way after meeting with you with the, sort of the, the progress and the rhythms along the facade as, as you'll be walking along. along the facade as you'll be walking along, it really is very nice, moving, things about. Very interesting, if not, come on with it.
Do you mind if I have a comment?
Go ahead, Kevin.
Todd and Bob, would it be agreeable, this is the first time I'm seeing these calculations, dimensions, would it be agreeable if you grant a conditional use that you put some sort of language in there that I review it, or that it just meets the zoning code in general before the conditional use is granted?
Yeah, I think, so Kevin, this is Bob, the intent is that we are going to make a resubmission soon, but I don't have a problem with a condition that says, you're subject to the zoning officer's review of plans as you be entitled to otherwise.
Thank you.
So in regard to the compliance of the design of the building with subdivisional land development requirements, are there any other questions or comments, questions about their, how they've arrived at this, or comments about it in general?
I really appreciate the progression from the last meeting to this meeting. It does have the level of detail that's shown, not just along the street facade, but also up at the hardest levels, and I think really reads the way that the commission was trying to speak to at that first meeting, and the amount of work that went into this is very, very.
Can you freeze right there, Adam? I have a question about this section, can you? The section from the, no, I'm sorry, keep it, keep it where it is. Not the very far right, breaking kind of section, but the one just to the left of that? Over to the right, Adam, with your cursor, yeah, this, this here. So is that third floor set back or not?
No.
Okay.
Set back here, it's not set back here, but.
I see the shadow, I just couldn't tell. For sure, okay.
So this is, you're saying it's flush, three stories tall?
But then it sets back, or the round?
So.
This is a set back, yeah.
That's set back, so, okay, because we're, okay, it's a little optical illusion. Filtering the flatness of the rendering with the fact that it's actually set back, okay. I don't have a question. Any other questions, Adam?
No, I would, I would reiterate what was said, I really appreciate the effort that went into it, I think it's gotten a whole lot better, and continuing to get better all the time. I appreciate that.
I would agree, but I know there was all this commentary about the windows last time, and how big windows should be, but the new third story, like there's these new, I don't know what you would call this proportion of window, and with no.
Those punch ones, yeah.
Yeah, no split sashes and things, and just, I know this is an apartment up there, and I guess, depends on what the floor plan is of that apartment, but, I mean, I, I guess I'm more partial to the larger windows than the sort of gun slide style windows personally, but, and then the materiality, same thing, it's almost like a sort of industrial overlay on the facade, but it's an architectural detail, it's, it's just an observation. They repeat this sort of computer card punches throughout the facade, and that's a change, I think, from last time.
Yeah.
So the only question I have is, I mean, you've taught us many times that you're not really tenant bid up yet, so you don't really know what the tenant floor plates are going to be. If it turned out you needed doors in other places to accommodate your tenant mix, where do you see it, the design you're showing us now, the opportunity to kind of swap out windows for doors, if that needed to be done in order to accommodate different tenant floor plates?
Right, I think that, you know, instance here, that these could come down, they could also come down here, I mean, they really are flexible.
And would you, would you generally follow the same pattern you have elsewhere with the doors, and some sort of transom window or something like that above it? Is that, is that sort of approach you'd take? If you created a door somewhere else?
I mean, that's a good question, and maybe, but you really have to look at it, by the way.
I'll ask, again, even though I've asked this a zillion times, would you consider putting more doors in, even if they're not used? So that in the future, as the use of the building evolved over ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, there's a lot more flexibility. I mean, the example we always give is how Maves occupied three storefronts and had three sets of doors, and one time it was three stores, and then it became one. The doors were there, and it allowed so much flexibility in the future. Is, is there thought to kind of building in flexibility so that over decades, as the use has changed, there's much more ease to be configured?
Yeah.
I'd like to follow that, also, I agree, Todd, completely, and I think that's one of the things I think we've been saying from the beginning, that it just doesn't look like the north side of Havener. I still don't understand why we need those huge double doors. That's, that's very suburban feeling, it's not, I mean, I know, it's very strip mall feeling, and I feel like in following up a Todd saying, if we just had single doors, why do we need double doors? It's not a code requirement, as long as there are certain width, and there's the clearance in sides, and it's not an ADA requirement, for the same reason, I feel that it's really ungainly compared to what we have now on that side of the street, as well as what we have on the opposite side of the street and all the way down Aberford. If we could just make single doors every so often, doesn't have to be in a regular pattern, but not have those huge entrances, that's just really out of scale.
Yeah, I think, I'm going to continue with that.
Absolutely.
Sure.
And I know we're not evaluating that here in the planning commission, and that is something the HARB's going to look at, because.
This is guidance, so we can, that's what the HARB. That's the idea.
Yeah.
So I think the sense is, in terms of compliance with the SADO, it looks like we're pretty much there, but there's still some other things we could do.
There's always more.
Well, I wouldn't put it that way, the overarching comment so far, there was just two regarding doors, right? One is, the building might be more adaptable to the market with more doors.
Yeah.
You know, because you could, you could subdivide the retail, and these are pretty large retail spaces. And then the, the other comment was this sort of how many doors in gang, right, and whether you need.
I'd suggest thinking about it in terms of door opportunities, places that could be doors.
I mean, it's a fair comment about the double doors.
And the more random it is, as we have said, as you heard me say this many times, the better.
Many times.
I might, you know, if we're making like architectural comments, the stair tower doesn't have any windows, it looks like.
It definitely could, yeah.
And then people might be more likely to use the stairs and stay in shape if they have windows.
Not a good comment.
Was that a painted mural that was shown on last?
Yeah. I think it's just illustrative, right?
Yeah, that's all.
If you were not to have a mural there, what would that wall be designed like? Well, because if you have a mural there, you have to make a light wall, right? If you don't have a mural there, you don't want a light wall.
Well, just to be technical, like if you were doing like the mosaic wall, you could sell windows to this wall, but yeah.
There are some great murals in Philadelphia with windows, I don't, those are many of them.
If you really wanted the, the impression of one piece of art, you can also put the dot matrix film on the glass, and it's all kinds of things you could do.
So, the last, the issue of just generally being in the context of its surroundings and neighborhood, which we will defer to the HARB, but I can offer our advice to, are there any further comments or?
Is it worth looking at the renderings, or? Because I noticed that there were renderings in the, do these match the new elevations, or?
Uh huh, yeah. So.
They don't have trees, the trees would.
So, so Dave would.
Well, that was, that was my request, and I really appreciate it. It's a lot easier to see what the building looks like without the trees.
But now you can go to the next rendering and see.
Yeah, there's, there's way to go now.
So, there you go. But you can see it both ways, but yes, this, if you just want to go through, this is, you can see that the plaza there, the courtyard that we're creating, on the left. Yeah. There you can see from across the street.
Trees grow fast.
Those trees. Here's the mansard that you like so much, Dave, on the.
Yeah.
As I say, I really appreciate it.
Here's a little bit of bird's eye view of it, and then as you get through these, we've added one from the rear, we talked about. There you see the plaza there. There's a lot of renderings.
Yeah.
So here's the rear parking area, and it's the opportunity for whatever that mural is to extend back into that parking, and have some cool stripes go out the building. And then this is just to give you a sense of the scale across the street.
Yeah.
Jim had brought up.
Thank you for giving us that.
Just to get that better sense of scale, that we feel we're very much in scale, but aren't happy with that. And I think that mansard is going to be, you're going to love it.
No, but it's been toned down, and I appreciate that, too.
Yeah, it's toned down, it's not as tall, it comes around, is engaged with the brick.
I think it goes with evidence required, personally.
Everybody's your credit.
Are the materials that you would be using, based on the rendering that you showed us today, same as the materials palette that you submitted in November with an earlier iteration of this, or would there be a different materials palette?
I think it's a different.
It's a different.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll redo our full resubmission, we'll collect all the comments about the facade, and then we would update the material sheets of the HARB. Okay, next week.
Any other points of discussion?
Not at this time.
So it sounds to be about a number of comments regarding the doors, and sizes they're up, and locations they're up. But I believe that is, and windows in the stair tower, I believe.
Well, it's, yeah.
Those are the comments we have at this point. Are there any comments from the public about the architecture or the design?
I have a question, and probably this was already discussed, but I thought the code only allowed a three-story buildings on the corners. Why is it in the middle of the road?
That's not the case, the underlying basic code allows for two-story, thirty-two-foot buildings, but buildings that are painting the main building bonus, which we talked about a little earlier.
Yeah, I missed that.
Are allowed to rise to thirty-six feet or three stories, and that could be anywhere in the five-eight district, not just at a corner.
Is there any like to oppose that?
Well, this, as a matter of process, we're not looking to revise that part of the code right now, and even if we did revise it, this application was filed at a time when that was ineffective, so they could benefit from the rules that are ineffective. If there's a concern you have that could be addressed through the massing of the building, I mean, I don't think they're going to make a two-story building.
I just thought the code allowed only four on the corners, five outside, and six other for it, and now we're getting three-story buildings in the middle of the street, but that's the way it's going to be, that's the way it's going to be.
Well, I would just note, I mean, for what it's worth, that the building steps back on the third floor quite a bit from, so it's not, it's not just a continuous three-story building. But this, again, you know, this does not make trees in the rendering, so that you can more clearly see the building, but you can see how the third floor is set back from the street.
Other questions about the architecture or urban design? Go ahead.
It's Ross, like.
I love it. I love the level of detail that you would have this time around. We had a discussion at the last meeting about a green wall, a vegetated wall, and there'd been discussion about it being on the south side of the building. I noticed that there's a mural there, but it's not, the south side is the hot side, and you're in, it would be a perfect place for a vegetated wall, and I'm wondering if you would consider that, or is it where you stand, incorporating a vegetated wall into the structure?
Yeah, we, I'd love to put a vegetated wall there, and I don't think it's off the table, it's just not, it's something we have really taken the time to fully vet and figure out. Your points are well taken and very good, we just.
Will it, will it show up in, you know, the next round, or would you?
I don't, I just don't think at this point, I don't know how that it's.
Was there a reason that it wasn't incorporated?
It's quite expensive, I mean, the expense of it is not insignificant.
Did that see the cooling effect of the vegetation, and the fact that on the back, it's much more industrial in the look, and as well aesthetically. But a vegetated wall, it creates cooling, it's also good for the economics of people that are residing in the building. It lowers the electrical use and heat. And I guess one other comment is on the front, the corners, the ends of the structure are very impressive, the three dimensionality, the cut in, it's cut out, and I know that that's three quarters of the images that we see, but mid-block, I was wondering, is, does the top of the building, is it flush, or is there any kind of cornice, any kind of three-dimensional relief? Mid-block?
Yeah.
Yeah, the third floor section? Yeah, it just dissolves.
I mean, there would be a.
That's brutalist.
There'd be a metal coping up there.
Yeah, right. Which has a purpose, but it's, here we have hornices and three dimensionality, and it just dies at the top.
Well, the philosophy building, which is the new structure, shows this sort of more traditional.
You don't have a. I am sorry, you're saying that.
No, that's the existing building, not.
But I'm wondering, is there any architecturally, look up, and architectural feature that finishes the building is at the top, and I'm not a builder, but there is.
Yeah, I absolutely understand.
Expectation a lot of times to see that, especially since we're giving up a lot of our architectural relief from what we have.
And I guess from our viewpoint, where we really are playing with that are the pieces that are right along the street, those parts that are pushed back are a more modern insert with just a very simple coping at the top.
Let me ask you this from a code point of view, I think if what you're referring to is covered in our code, under the code for mixed-use buildings, in the roof zone. mixed-use buildings, um, in the roof zone, when flat roofs are proposed, a parapet wall or projecting cornice shall be included in the front facade. This can be a projecting element, a change of material, or a similar element that provides a visual termination of the building facade.
Thank you.
I think, is that what you were referencing? So this is in our code, so can, maybe that'd be easier just to sort of say, how does, what you're proposing address that? But, and that's the kinds of things that Kevin would review ultimately, but is that something you have addressed now or?
I would have to look at that.
Okay, right, so it's in our code.
And I, I, I'm not saying something really, really ornate or anything, but it just, uh, personally.
Um, just.
It would be nice to see the term.
Five hundred five oh two H.
Sorry.
Five hundred five oh two H. It's the design standards for mixed-use buildings. Just look them over and make sure everything is made in.
I do wear five oh two.
Yeah, so, yeah, we just need to. Thank you for catching that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Or any surprise to someone else who finds a zoning code issue that hasn't been addressed? Code's a very. Any comments from anyone online? No, I can't see the grid anymore. Okay. So we have a handful of comments that we will write up and pass on to the HARB, um, in relation to what we feel could be, um, addressed to make this work a little better in terms of that provision, but I think we have agreement from the commission that the HARB's issues in the CERA would be a de facto recognition that you've achieved that part of the condition that you have to meet the neighborhood contracts, and then, I think, um, I mean, how does, the, what, I think you believe, you said you demonstrated you've met the SADO requirements except for one place where there's like a two-inch variation, is everyone comfortable with allowing that wager for a two-inch variation? Okay, so it sounds like you get a pass on that two inches. So is there anything else regarding this? Are there any other, uh, matters related to the conditional use provisions that the planning commission would like to raise? The, the specific provisions in those sections of the code? Understanding other aspects of this development that we talked about next month? Okay, do you have anything? Um, okay, then I think that we, um, we can say that the, uh, this, our, our recommendation, our written recommendations will be forthcoming, but I think that we can consider this uh, agenda item closed in terms of the conditional use. So the last item on our agenda is general public comment, and here is where we can entertain comments about other issues, for example, the phasing you asked about. Would you mind staying for a few minutes if there are questions about your project? Okay, there was a question earlier this evening about the phasing, could you restate your question?
Um, well, this, this is a sentence I already kind of, the phases would be based on the tenant driving that, and that just concerned me because of timing, I see, and this is a building to this, in the town, I'm just wondering like, you know, how, how does that work exactly, right? You can't finish a building, do you know?
No, 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 I, I can explain it, I think I know what your concern is, if, um, do we have that, can you put that? I can show you and plan what we're talking about, it's pretty simple. It's the, the, yeah, so, and I'll get real specific, cause it'll make it easier. Um, mainline shift is over here. Um, they're on, on this side, this is the Get Cafe building, which stays. Um, in order for them to continue to, to stay open and operate, um, we decided to do this portion first, and when it's complete, we'll move them over, and then we'll do this much smaller. That's it, it wasn't any more complicated than that.
I didn't know you did a tenant, I thought you were.
Well, mainline shift is, is the tenant, I just didn't want.
Oh, that's the tenant, okay, I did think you, you gotta rent five hundred units or whatever.
No, no.
Units before we begin, okay, thank you. That's great, and where's the, where's the green space you were talking about exactly?
The what?
The green or opens, what was it called?
The plaza for you.
The plaza, that's what I'm talking about.
It's, it's here next to Get Cafe where EZ phone repairs.
So it's like an opening in the.
It'll just be a wide open space.
That's fantastic, I love that.
It was explained in an earlier meeting to, right now we only have that little tiny sliver that's to the American family to get back to the parking lot, so that creates a better pedestrian connection.
Um, any other public comment? Okay, um, I'd like to, um, offer another thought about the parking issue, and I apologize if I conveyed that we did not think or understand that it's connected to the number of housing units, obviously, we understand that, that if there are more housing units, then that is a slightly higher parking requirement. I would like, though, to let you know that, I was looking it up on my computer, um, in the summer of twenty twenty, the planning commission did do a kind of, um, quick study of parking requirements for downtowns in places like downtown Norbert, which were used to adjust our parking standards for downtown Norbert, which is published on, was published on the part of the webpage, where, um, planning commissions, um, meetings and reports are published, and if you'd like that, and if you write to the email address that's on our agenda, I will send you that report, so you can see what our findings were about parking in, in, in general. Uh, I will just say, um, one of the things we learned was that, um, most, um, communities now with, uh, development of our sort around train stations have no parking requirements whatsoever. Uh, that is the way things work in, in, in planning our country. Um, and that those who, um, do have, do have parking requirements in downtown areas, ours were kind of right where they were, um, in fact, a little higher. I think we found that parking requirements were about point eight-five, uh, cars per unit in transit-oriented areas, and ours is one per unit. Uh, as a result of public concern about parking, we actually raised the parking requirements to include one spot for visitors for every ten units, so in essence, we raised the parking requirement from one to one point one, uh, spaces, and we did this after evaluating best practices and codes in transit-oriented areas, so you may, um, have, you know, every community's different, uh, but I don't want you to think that we sort of think about that we don't think hard about parking, and we don't look to examples of other communities uh, and, and try to make sure that what we're doing is consistent with what the field is learning about parking usage in transit-oriented areas. There may not be the right answer for Norbert, but I want to let you know, assure you that we actually thought about it really carefully, and we did make adjustments in our code a few years ago. And I, I, the reason I didn't want to talk about parking tonight is, right now, it is only an application for seventeen units in this new building. If and when there's an application for more units, then we can discuss the impact of that parking for other uses, that, that would be uh, the appropriate time, um, uh, to do, so, but I expect that would be potentially a question, so. Uh, if, as, again, if you go to our agenda, I believe we have on our agenda our email address, I'm gonna double check that. norbertplanningcommission@gmail.com, we hear that, send me your info and I will send you that report, so you can read what we learned when we said, and we did that study, by the way, uh, because there were resident concerns about the helm. And there were resident concerns about Tim's other projects, Conway and, and, um, Essex, and, uh, excuse me, Forest in Essex, and, uh, we wanted to make sure our code was, was on point for the new developments that we thought were coming, so, and, and that was from twenty twenty. So, uh, if there are no other comments from the public or commissioners, I will, sorry, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Paul Giltre, uh, as I mentioned a couple times, the Get building will remain, I was just wondering, does that indicate that Get itself is expected to remain as a tenant?
That's to be determined, because they have given thought to expanding and potentially relocating into some of the newer space, but not quite sure, but they're, the plan is for them to stay.
Somewhere in this block.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so an entertaining motion to adjourn in world record terms later.
Not wanting to waste any time, so.
Is there a second?
Ten seconds.
On paper?
Okay, we have a bunch of lots of, we'll wait till they're announced.